Okay, I think we can go ahead and get started. It's 6:30 PM. And this is the July 25th, 2022 Select Board Meeting that is being held in person, although members of the public are also able to join via Zoom. And I guess we will start with the consent agenda.
Okay.
Remotion?
Move to approve the consent agenda. Want me to read two other things?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Well, I would like to maybe pull the reformatory branch trail letter to talk about a couple of things.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Okay. I thought it was a well-written letter and captured, you know, the sentiment of the Article of From Town Meeting. I would just, and I understood why you put "to whom it may concern", because there's a number of parties, but I am concerned that we're not actually identifying who those parties are, who we want the letter to go to specifically, and who we might have in the CCs. And my reason for that is, you know, this may be referred to in the future, and it'll be a document that people might refer to, and I think that's just important.
Right, but I mean, I don't think that we have a specified list of recipients. You know, we are notifying the public through this letter. That's what the article asked us to do.
So, I remember Carmen making a suggestion, whether or not we still feel it's appropriate, that perhaps it be addressed to the town manager specifically, you know, who is charged with carrying out the town meeting, you know, the import of the town meeting warrant articles. But we, and so many departments are specifically, should be on notice about this, that, you know, that could either be done through the town manager or on a CC list, including, you know, the National Fisheries and Wild, whatever the correct title is.
I guess, Carrie, I turn to you about the address list for such a, I mean, my bigger concern is leaving somebody out.
I can appreciate that. I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah. So maybe it's the town manager and public, but then somehow is it incumbent upon us to get it out to all the current owners in our own departments?
Well, I do think it's incumbent upon us to circulate it to the appropriate parties. I guess in terms of who, if you wanted to list groups specifically, then I guess you say "and others", because there may be others that we find that should be receiving this letter.
I had thought that some of the people were in the state that this was supposed to go to, but maybe not.
Well, that was the, well, that's the national, right? But it could also be state. I mean, there are any number of potential interested parties. I mean, that's the, that's why "to whom it may concern", I guess.
I found "to whom it may concern" was all-inclusive, so I'm happy with that.
Well, I don't know. I mean...
I think we should let the town manager's office decide. I think we should look at the content of the letter.
Well, okay, how about this? We don't have a compelling need to issue the letter this week. Okay, so we can pull it now, we can kick it down to another agenda. My hope had been that this would simply, it was a housekeeping item from a town meeting that the moderator had suggested, so we prepared the letter. And I don't know, it's more complicated than we expected.
This was not necessary, right? This was, this was a suggestion.
It was a suggestion.
It's not regulatory.
It's not regulatory, it's a recommendation. You know, I thought it was straightforward, but if it's not, then hey.
All right.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Let's put it off to another day.
Okay, if that's the sense of the board, then let's proceed with the revised motion on the consent agenda.
All right, fine. Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the Article 47 reformatory branch letter.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now to our second point of business, the town manager's report.
Thank you and good evening. We had a significant fire last evening that I know you're all aware of, but just to make the public aware, we had a large two-family home located at 119-121 Sudbury Road. The event went into six alarms, more due to heat than the severity of the incident. But six alarms for us meant that we had 18 communities responding. We had 60 to 65 firefighters that were involved, 15 to 18 pieces of apparatus at the scene. We had no injury to occupants. We had one injury to a firefighter. It was not a Concord firefighter who was hospitalized. And I think of important note, we had two relatively new dispatchers who dispatched the incident. And the fire chief received feedback from two chiefs from other communities that were participating in mutual aid, and they commented at what an excellent job those two dispatchers did. As you can imagine, it's, that was a significant event. A lot of coordination going on with all of those different departments participating, and there probably were other things that they were dispatching in town at the same time. So that was a great response. And I don't know if anybody saw the news, but there were a lot of fires in Massachusetts yesterday. That was particularly surprising. So then turning to the weekly reports, I'll run through the July 15 report. First, the week of July 11th, we had our second youth academy. We had over 20 youth in town participating in the academy. District Attorney Marion Ryan was in attendance on the first day. And our, from our staff Sergeant Tia Manchuso, our two school resource officers, Cara Palladino and Derek Rodriguez, participated in the program. And the intent is to show these young people what a day in the life of a police officer is. And they had the opportunity to tour the district court and the state police horse barn in addition to our own public safety facility. We are working with the consultant firm of Wright Peers on our reinspection of our town-owned culverts and bridges, and that's well underway. It's about 25% complete. At this time, we can do water sampling at White Pond. And the most recent sampling has resulted in a swim at your own risk. That's actually not from the week of the 15th, that's most recent this week. We have a back-to-school backpack drive that is being coordinated by our community services coordinator, Bonnie Wilber. We are collecting backpacks and school supplies until August 21st. And there's some information in the report on our COVID statistics. Also a note that our Summer Shakespeare on the Lawn program returns, started this past weekend and goes this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, the 30th and 31st, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. The library is now a member of the Sustainable Libraries Initiative. So there's some information in the report about that. In the most recent report, a note on the Classification and Compensation Study, which is well underway and was just discussed somewhat at the joint meeting of the Personnel Board and the Personnel Study Task Force. We have a new firefighter, Benjamin Lewis, who came to us as a full-time firefighter from the town of Oxford. He is in his training and will be assigned to a shift in the coming weeks. Information about the number of calls for both police and fire. A note about our Household Hazardous Waste Program that runs monthly, April through November. We would encourage residents who are interested in disposing of hazardous waste, such as paint thinner, gasoline, oil, antifreeze, and other hard-to-dispose of items to avail themselves of that opportunity. Let's see, okay, and I think that's it. Happy to take questions.
Any questions? Yes, Mary.
Good, good response on the fire on Sudbury Road. I was wondering, does the town of Concord offer any services for the people that were displaced in that fire?
So I know they are working with the Red Cross, the residents, and as of this afternoon, the resident needs were being addressed by the Red Cross. But I did put in a request to the fire chief that if he was aware of any additional needs or ways the community could participate in helping the families, to let me know, and I will pass that along to the board.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Terry.
Do we know the cause of the fire yet?
I do not.
Okay. Couple of things.
We will be speaking with the fire chief August 8th.
That's right.
I want to thank Mike and Mark Polly and whoever else helped to get these other screens up.
Yes.
They've helped for all of us. Question for Carrie about the Board of Health part of your town manager's report. There's an Emerson Hospital contract, and I'm wondering what's involved with that.
We have, it may be related to the contracted nursing services that we have, but I will double-check that and let you know, just to make sure that information is accurate.
Okay. And how is the National Grid project going on Common Ave? I saw that in the report as well.
Well, we, Justin Richardson, our Assistant Public Works Director, is here. He probably could speak to that better than me if you want to take that.
We might, yeah. I mean, it's not part of the agenda, but we could at least, as a follow-up, ask him that question while he's at the table. Yeah.
You mean when we get to those?
Yeah, we'll get to the other grant of location petitions.
Okay, thank you.
I have more questions.
Yeah, Mary. Well, actually Linda was up next.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for identifying the positions that the Personnel Board recently recommended. And I guess I had two questions, one is, and they're related. The Environmental Services Coordinator, as well as the Health Department, mentioned an environmental inspector position. And I was wondering where these will reside and how they two relate?
So the Environmental Services Coordinator position is in Public Works, and it is a realignment of duties from multiple positions into one. So it doesn't result in additional headcount, but it's a realignment of duties. And then the inspector position is within the Board of Health, and we are advertising this position in lieu of an assistant director position based upon the workload over there, and the needs seem to line up more with an inspector versus an assistant director.
Okay.
And that's, it's a very difficult field to recruit in right now, Board of Health positions, as you might imagine. There were a lot of retirements over the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Okay, now to you, Mary.
Okay, two quick ones. I know we had talked about looking at ridership on the trolley, so I'm wondering if we could have an update on that next time. And the other thing I'd wonder about is what's happening with Giroux.
Yep, so we are, we are getting to the end of the Giroux construction project. The Gail Dowd, who is serving as our interim finance director, and Ryan Orr, our facilities director, who's overseeing that project, have had several meetings with the contractor. There are definitely some issues with cost overruns that they are trying to work through. But I think probably sometime in August, we could give you an update on that project. But we are trying to get to the end of that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the town manager? All right, well, for my chair's remarks, I just have two points I'd like to address. The first was that the state legislature passed a bill, H5060, called an Act Arriving Clean Energy and Offshore Wind. And contained in that act was a provision that allows the 10 communities that have passed fossil-free infrastructure initiatives to apply and to get a, the ability as a pilot program to implement that directive. So there are a few caveats. One is that the town must achieve its 10% affordability criteria for affordable housing. And there are some ambiguities, I think, in the wording, whether or not, you know, Concord would really qualify or not pending the census and all of those issues. So I've requested some more clarifications from Alice Kaufman, as well as clarifications about what next steps the town would need to take to activate this clause if the governor signs the bill, by the way. Governor still has to sign the bill. And that's due by the end of this coming week.
So what you're saying is that the, there's essentially a local option bill that has been passed by the legislature that would not, which would give us the ability to have, enforce a fossil-free construction practices without having our local, our homeroom bill.
Right.
Not homeroom, home rule.
Petition. That's right. So they rolled that request in with the others from Brookline and the other communities that had similar kinds of initiatives, and now have a means to start those off. Now, it's limited to those 10 communities, so it's not going to become a statewide thing right away. But it is, in essence, a pilot project that, you know, takes off from where we started with this. So that's, that's one point of info. I think, you know, we still have to find out if the governor signs the bill, and also what new steps, and whether actually Concord even qualifies based upon the 40B constraints.
It'd be a question as to whether such a bill would actually be, what do you say, constitutional in terms of, if it's not based on home rule petitions, but is a bill which affects a certain number of towns that have been chosen, it would be probably questionable to begin with.
Well, I imagine those are questions that attorneys are discussing already.
And we'll leave it to them.
Yeah, okay. So the second point is that members of the public have suggested the possibility of a special town meeting focused on possible funding, additional funding for the middle school building project. And I think I've stated before, at least my personal view, is that it's premature to actually take the step of arranging for a special town meeting on that subject. For example, the committee, the Middle School Building Committee, has already defined a process where they're going to look at the 60% estimate to determine, you know, what scope changes might need to be made. However, it was worth taking a look at what would it mean for the town to hold a special town meeting if it came to that? And so I worked with the town manager and consulted the town moderator about some sort of sketched-out dates. And so if you waited until after the 60% estimate was received, and at that point decided, oh, there might be a reason to have such an event, then, you know, and opened the warrant at that time, you would be able to have the town meeting approximately December 15th. Okay, so again, the specific dates would need to be vetted by the town clerk's office and all of that. But, and it's too early anyway to decide.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, but just to give a sense of, all right, if, if the warrant was opened in mid-October, mid-December probably would be the timeframe of the meeting. And then the second question, and this is why I'm bringing this up in these remarks, was something I posed to Carrie, which was, would we need a second town-wide election if a special town meeting, you know, increased the budget for the project? And she consulted with Bonn Council. Bonn Council's response was that not necessarily, that by default, we would need an election in the case of any increase in the budget, but we could also appeal to the state. And by convention, the limit in the past has been up to 10% increase in budget to be granted without the town-wide election. So that is a option that is available should we ever have a special town meeting on this subject, and then should the town meeting vote to increase that budget. So that just is all in terms of hypotheticals at this point.
And given when construction is likely to start, I don't see why there'd be any reason to not have it be part of the annual town meeting in April rather than having it, having a special town meeting two months earlier.
Well, bid packages go out in February.
And?
They need to be based upon a firm, an approved budget. In other words, the town has to have approved the funding that is in the scope of the bidding that's going out.
Well, but they could bid whatever they care to bid.
Oh, of course, they could come in below, but you...
No, but they could come in higher.
They could also come in higher.
Which is likely.
Which is a whole separate issue there. But I'm just saying that if the, the town cannot go out to bid for a scope of a project for which their estimate exceeds the authorized spending by the town. That's what I've heard. So that's, that's what gets in the way of that. Yeah, because that was my first inclination, was to say, hey, let's see what bids come back, then we'll have a town meeting, we'll figure it out.
Right.
But it doesn't work like that. So, okay.
Okay, Matt, are you going to...
I've taken a lot of time over my chair's remarks, but I thought these were two big points for the town.
And just really briefly, can you, for the public, go over that hybrid meetings are back that the legislature...
Oh, yeah, very simply, the authorization to hold remote meetings or hybrid meetings has been extended through March of next year without any other kinds of changes. So we had heard rumors about being obliged to have hybrid meetings for all meetings, things like that. None of those changes have taken place. It's just simply status quo, the recent status quo for us until through next March.
So as far as timing for a potential special town meeting for the school and/or ballot question, will that be a separate item on a future agenda?
Oh, gosh, yes.
So we'll talk about it more than we just...
We would, we would need to open the warrant, you know, there's lots, lots more. But it's way too early for that. It's really just a matter of, okay, layout, what
is possible.
might happen or could happen versus what couldn't happen.
Okay.
Okay. All right, now, let's move to our next, and our first, public hearing, which is the application for a new liquor license of the West Concord Tavern LLC, doing business as the West Village Tavern.
Right, move to open the public hearing for an application for new liquor license. West Concord Tavern LLC, DBA West Village Tavern. Frank A. Santo, manager of record at 13 Commonwealth Ave.
Okay, so whoever is representing the West Concord Tavern, please step forward and introduce yourself at the microphone.
We need a second.
Oh, we need a second on the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Hi, my name is Frank Santo, manager of record for the new restaurant in West Concord.
Okay. And you can bring that mic right up to your mouth, it works better that way.
All right.
Okay, so can you tell us a little bit more about your application, about the new business? And then we'll just get into the questions.
Well, I am presently in the, in the restaurant business. I have been for 30-some-odd years. Own the three, four locals, and Casa Loca in Westwood. We have a local in Wellesley, Waltham. Let's see, where else? We had one in Newton, Wayland, and now presently. So we just decided not to go with that theme and just open up something new and different in West Concord.
Okay. And do you have...
In the former 99 space.
Right.
Yeah.
And then do you have a date, an opening date in mind roughly?
Well, we're getting there, we're close, I would have to say. Probably right around beginning to mid-September.
Okay, thanks. All right, so the application, the full application was sent to us as board members. It seemed basically to be in order, there was a question about the alternate manager record that believe that today that has been dealt with. So any other questions from the board on this application?
Well, I think we're delighted to see something going into that space.
Yes.
And a business, another business coming to West Concord. Do you need any site plan approval for this, from the planning board?
I believe we're...
It's not a change of use, so...
Yeah, I think we're ready to go.
Same seating and the same, and the same no parking.
Same seating, same capacity, same parking situation.
There's only two dedicated spots. Their grandfather with two dedicated spots, I believe.
And one of the things that I think, before this goes to the ABCC, there are probably a few things in the application that need to be sharpened up.
Okay.
And in particular, it's the inconsistency with regard to the ownership of the entity. On, you have the percentage ownerships and the people who are the owners of it are different. Three places in the application. In the Section 6, they show four owners with percentages ownership. And then in the appendix, there were nine owners, and some of the owners who were shown in six, Schedule 6, have different percentages. And then you attach a copy of the operating agreement, which still, has still different owners and different percentages. And so I think...
I agree, we'll definitely sharpen that up before it goes into the state, for sure.
I think, because I think that will be a problem. We would like, very much like to see you succeed on this and get it, get the thing done. But you might want to just, and you do have the opportunity even after you submit the application to us to amend it and to, you know, clean it off, as it were.
Yep.
And so I suggest that you would consider doing that and getting some extra help on that to make sure that you don't run into further delays with the, with the ABCC.
Okay, we will, we'll do that.
Yes, Terry.
Just briefly, wondering what kind of theme, what kind of food? Are you going to have entertainment? Just to get a sense of what it's going to be like.
It's going to be American cuisine, tavern cuisine, you know, burgers, steak tips, steaks, chops, full bar, martinis, bourbon, you know. It's going to be a typical American tavern.
Are you going to have any live entertainment?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Just to customers.
Hopefully, yeah.
The first act, right, Henry?
I got a quick, quick question.
Yes, Mary.
When the 99 was there, they used to have, first of all, I'm glad you're coming into that space. I live there, and I'm glad you're going to be there. When the 99 was there, sometimes they would project music through some speakers out into the sidewalk.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, good, so you're not going to do that?
Nope, no speakers on the sidewalks.
Great.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so can I get...
Do you have a question?
Oh, yes, sir, Mr. Gibbons.
The folks from the West Village Tavern did reach out to the fire department to do their 304 inspection, which is required for the restaurant.
Yeah.
But they're still building out. The only condition that I'd offer on any kind of approval tonight would be a successful completion. Oh, sorry, thanks.
Successful completion of the 304.
Yeah, which is standard, we did that back in April.
Okay.
And one other thing is that typically that a, an application for a CV license is submitted simultaneously with the, with the liquor license application, so they can both be moving ahead at the same time, so that you don't have to come back to us a second time to get that. Now, I think the CV may require some interaction with the Board of Health and kitchen design and stuff like that, but I'm sure you've done that already.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't need to make that a condition. Yeah, so we don't need to make that a condition of approval.
No, no, I'm just making, trying to make helpful suggestions.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Now, can I get a motion?
Right, but.
Oh, well, you want to close the public hearing?
Yeah, you want to ask questions from the public?
Oh, sorry, gosh. Are there questions from the public?
Okay.
Okay.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we can have a motion to approve.
Okay, move to approve the application for a new liquor license, West Concord Tavern LLC, DBA West Village Tavern, located at 13 Commonwealth Avenue, contingent upon the successful completion of the Section 304 fire inspection.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
That was too easy, wasn't it?
Thank you.
All right.
Hey, move to open the public hearing for transfer of liquor license, pledge of inventory, pledge of license from J M M S Liquors located at 18 Walden Street to Ranewick Enterprise, Inc., DBA Walden Liquors.
So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Andrew Upton, attorney for the applicant. And with me is AJ Singh, who is the applicant, the 100% owner of the company and the proposed manager of record.
Okay. So you were in front of, well, J M S Liquors was in front of us just several months ago. And there was a group that was taking over the store. And it appears that either, I don't know, did that not work out? Or is there? Can you describe a little bit why the license is being transferred at this short interval?
Yes, I don't think it was transferred last time. I think that deal fell.
It fell through before the transfer occurred. So this is the, another.
So this is a separate, distinct, totally new applicant.
And we did approve the transfer.
We approved the previous transfer, but it never actually took effect.
Transaction did not.
I really don't have any details on that.
Okay, well, I think in that case, it's not important.
Typically, it's sort of a business transaction that falls apart and they had to find a better buyer.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, yeah, so it isn't important since it wasn't, didn't actually take place. Okay, so questions from the board about this application, which again, we've received the contents on. And I think we also resolved the questions about alternate manager of record.
Right, Mr. Chairman, if, if you want, I can give you a brief overview of the applicant and his experience and the concept.
Yeah, that'd be fine. It's great.
Sure. As we said, this is a transfer of the license at the same location. Current owners are consolidating their businesses as they get older and they, and this is an opportunity for a young family to own their own business. Our goal is for customers, business neighbors and town officials to see the same store with the same name and have the same experience after the transfer as they have today. It's a popular and well-run store and we intend to keep it that way. The character and fitness of this applicant is strong. Mr. Singh has experience selling age restricted products when he worked at CVS. He has experience with ID checking and handling of private information from his work at Capital One Bank. And most importantly, Mr. Singh has worked part-time for the last 10 years, helping his cousins who own Shop and Save Liquors in Quincy, One Stop Liquors in Chelsea. He has ordered inventory. He has opened and closed liquor stores. He has stocked products. He's worked the counter. He's checked IDs and he has managed staff. He estimates he's worked over 2,000 hours in liquor stores in the past decade. He's tips trained and he's never had a violation of any kind when he worked at these stores. He's funding this project from personal savings and a loan from Rockland Trust. If approved, he will work full-time at the store and he will quit his job at the bank, which I believe he's looking forward to. His wife will work as the assisted manager and he will offer employment to all current staff in hopes that they will stay. He hopes to bring back wine tastings and wine education to pre-COVID levels and to increase the selection of craft beers as well as flavored waters and non-alcohol beers that are increasingly popular. I hope that's a hopeful overview of his qualifications. And he'd like to just say a brief word of greeting to the board as well.
Hello, everyone. My name is AJ Singh. I'm really looking to establish as a small business owner. Me and my wife have worked really hard. We have a growing family. We have 16-month son and a daughter on the way. So life is full of joy and, you know, we want to establish our roots in the community, get back as much as possible and also do best for our kids and our future. So that's what the purpose of the liquor store is. And, you know, want to work for myself, be a small business owner. And that's what the whole idea is.
All right, now questions from the board.
I have one suggestion about the application as well, about something that may.
Can he talk into the mic?
May be helpful for you.
Harry, talk to the mic, please.
For you to, to deal with in the application. The application gives the purchase price for the, for the business. And with the, with the loan from Rockland Trust, or I think it's 360 some odd thousand dollars. And then personal assets of the, of the owner are another 80,000. But, but it's clear from the, from the purchase agreement that the purchase price does not include the inventory. The inventory is probably going to be probably $200,000 or $300,000 worth of additional expense. And I think it would be helpful, again, before we get this application to the ABCC, is that you make clear the source of the funds for the purchase of the inventory. Even though I know the, it is not a fixed number because it is subject to the taking of a physical inventory, but I think you can estimate it and you can at least show. And I think there are some bank records that you include in the application. It might be helpful for you to include some substantiation for the source of the funds that would also cover the purchase of the inventory.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Okay, other questions from the board? Is this, well, we don't have a 304 inspection here because it's just transfer of the license. Yeah, right. Okay, Linda?
So just as we asked previously, when do you expect to open?
So if everything goes well, I think probably approximately 30 to 40 days from now, given how long ABCC takes, I think. So.
September.
Yeah, so it will be September. Again, it's a running store, so it will be just me just going in there rather than the old.
New faces.
Exactly, yeah. Well, hopefully some old faces, just the new.
Yeah, yeah.
New sort of other face.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so are we ready for questions or comments from the public? If so, please use the raise hand feature and unmute yourself and identify yourself. I am not seeing anyone. So shall we close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I believe unless there are further questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Move to approve the transfer of liquor license, pledge of inventory and pledge of license from J M S Liquors, Inc., located at 18 Walden Street, Ranewick Enterprise, Inc., DBA Walden Liquors.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me just also. No, 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 not, this is incidental comment, have no effect on the vote, whatever. It's a suggestion, if you look at the documentation, the promissory note doesn't give the, leaves out the, the date on which the first payment is due. There was supposed to be a blank there. And then in the security agreement, it refers to obtaining the license from the city of Worcester, which is, which is, I think it would be difficult for. We don't, we can't give licenses in Worcester. I know, we, we think we're pretty omnipotent, but our, our scope does not go that far.
All right.
So look on the first page of the note where there is, there is no blank or no space. It should say 30 days after, et cetera, et cetera.
We'll do some of that.
Yeah, deal with that.
Okay. Well, Mr. Singh, welcome.
Congratulations.
Good luck to your business.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, thank you, everyone. And thank you, Michael, for all your guidance along the way.
Okay. So our first hearing, grant of location hearing is not due until 7:20, I believe it is, so.
7:15.
7:15, excuse me. So that gives us a few minutes to take care of some other business.
All right, 7:15 or later.
Yeah. So why don't we vote to approve our election officer reappointments?
Okay, let's see if we can find that one. Move to approve election officer reappointments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let's vote to assign the election warrants, both through a state primary and the special election.
Move to approve the state primary and special election warrants.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I don't think we have time at this moment to talk about Christopher Heights. Plus I need to recuse myself from that discussion as I'm a near butter. But we can vote, well, we're not going to vote on a special town calendar, town, right, town meeting calendar? Because there is no special town meeting being planned at this point. Now, we do have Alan Cathcart here. And what do you think? Give you four minutes? Four minutes?
Alan can't do that.
All right, well, let's see what we could do here. We'll, we'll understand why it is that we are not, yeah, or less. Yeah, try it.
I'll try.
Good evening, Alan Cathcart, Director, Concord Public Works. We had contemplated a special town meeting to bring to the town a request for borrowing authorization for the NAGOG treatment facility that we've identified a, another location. We've started some communication and outreach. We've worked with the Public Works Commission. We've talked to the Select Board. We've reached out to the town of Acton, the town manager and director of Public Works to inform them that when we build and construct a facility, it's going to be located in Concord. That's the current concept and design. We were eligible for a state revolving fund that's called SRF through the Clean Water Trust. Our project was selected to receive up to $28 million of borrowing authorization at 2% loan. Regrettably, we were unable to demonstrate that we had secured $28 million for the project through prior authorization. That's why we had the special town meeting. Last year, we went through the same drill. We were given an extension into October. We anticipated that would be the same case this year. We were informed for a lot of reasons, the state is not looking to extend these loans. They're having lots of challenges with, there's lots of money, lots of needs. They're really trying to juggle their priorities. I've been informed that our, should we resubmit an application? And we will do that. It's likely the project will be received favorably again. There's nothing that would be counted against us. And we do believe we'd be adding to our request a need for PFOS treatment, which would increase our ranking according to the state. So we're looking to evaluate the needs and the real costs, just like the school. We want to make sure we're asking for the right sum. And we know we have another six months to sort of come to some determination as far as what the needs would be. And we'd be applying in the fall for the loan once again. So any questions?
I got a little bit confused. The vote we took last year, what's the difference between that vote and the vote we're going to need to take?
The vote that was taken for funding the treatment facility was 2016, I believe, and that was for $16.5 million. The probable cost estimate right now, fully loaded, including design and construction admin, is about $35 million. So we are looking to evaluate what we can do, you know, to see if we can't right-size it or modify it in any way. But the bottom line is, at this point, we're looking at about $35 million for that treatment facility.
I heard there was some possibility of maybe joining MWRA and that they were having a special where they would have, you didn't have to pay the joining fee.
So I think we're over four minutes.
Yeah, we're over four minutes.
Okay.
So, so I'm limited to four minutes, I'm sorry. No. We will be evaluating, we, we understand just, I, I, I'm smiling, but $35 million is a significant investment. We understand that. We understand that there needs to be questions and understanding as far as what we're doing and why. And how about the other sources of supply, given the issue with PFOS that is affecting the nation? So we're going to go through that evaluation and we're looking at all alternatives. That's what we need to do. And we're looking for a long-term plan that we can sort of, we can explain to the town and they can understand what direction we're recommending, determine if they're interested in going in that direction.
Okay.
But we are using that water now, are we not?
That is correct. Currently, without the full-scale treatment, you know, we still do, it's unfiltered. It is disinfected with enhanced disinfection. We continue to protect the reservoir, but we run at risk. We are only able to operate very sparingly. We operate during the summer. Thank goodness we have it because right now we'd probably be in a serious water ban without it. With that said, I just remind everybody, please be cautious that we are in a drought. We're asking for people to comply with our one-day-a-week watering. That's a maximum, not a minimum. And, you know, it's, it's just an important asset for us, so.
Even today, we were robbed of rain.
I know.
Exactly, you're not looking for flash rain. We're looking for a good soaking for a couple of days would be nice if we can, anybody has any direct, you know, sort of connections?
Connections, we can work that through.
Thought you did.
So Alan, can you just, you did a great job with the four minutes. Can you just summarize again? So the next time we expect to hear from you on this topic?[1638.93] So the next time we expect to hear from you on this topic?
We will have done an evaluation as far as our long-term needs, be able to explain how NAGOG fits within that, and then determine if the town is interested and should, if our recommendation is to proceed with complete design and construction. We'll have probable cost estimates now that we'll work with to resubmit a loan request. We'll be doing that in the fall, probably the tune of around $35 million at this point. And then that will put us in a position of reevaluating if we are eligible, or we, and the state assigns us, it's an intended use plan. If we get on that, just like in the past, it's our decision whether we want to leverage their, their loan program or not.
So if you submit that request for the $35 million in the fall, how long does it take usually for, to hear back?
It's, it's a real dilemma, and they know this, the Clean Water Trust, as to when they're able to give communities a green light and when communities need to go through town meetings. It doesn't jive. They know that, we know that. That's why we're looking at a special town meeting in the fall. The likely, they tend to turn around January, February. Unfortunately, we're already setting our agenda for town meeting at that point. So that's the, that's the dilemma we have and have had.
Okay. But that just gives me some idea of what you're dealing with. Thank you.
Sure.
Quick question about the math. If it's $35 million to build it, and we already have 16 and 1/2 that was approved in 2016, why are we going for the whole $35 million for the loan?
The loan is what's granted. That's what's eligible through the state. So we'd go to the town meeting for the additional, to demonstrate the state, we had 16 and 1/2 authorization in 2016, plus what we need.
Increment is what you're going to need from the town, but the loan is 35 million.
At this point.
Got it. Okay.
I mean, could you potentially put in a warrant to annual town meeting that just had some shock and awe number in it that we could reduce for, you know, as we got closer?
It's possible. And if we have another alternative, you mentioned MWRA, we're seriously looking at that. We're talking to the senior people there.
And that would be something.
We're talking with other communities. It would be a regional approach, and if it's advantageous, then we might look at another ask. But we will, we'll have time to figure that out, and this is important. We understand, once-in-a-hundred-year kind of decision we're going to have to make. So now I'm at about 10 minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, we, we've made you go there. So, okay, thanks so much. And so now we're ready for our grant of location petitions from Comcast of Massachusetts III.
Okay. Move to open the public hearing for a grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts III Inc. to install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number 52 Bedford Street to utility pole number 32 Old Bedford Road.
Okay. And do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. So please introduce yourself. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Greg Franks, here on behalf of Comcast. And, you know, the motion pretty much says it, we're looking to, we have a, a number of petitions in front of you tonight that are all pretty much the same thing, network enhancement, not benefiting any particular customer. And this is one of them. It will be aerial cable in this instance and cover Bedford Street and Old Bedford Road as the motion indicated.
So this already has a cable? You're just replacing with it upgraded or new cables to, because of aging or capacity or?
Future-proofing, I guess you'd call it.
Uh huh. Okay. So it's a new technology?
I, I'm not really at liberty to say what, what all of it is. In fact, I, I don't, I don't know. But it's, it's, it's a new cable and it's, right, it's improved to improve the network.
Okay. Linda?
So my question is also related to the network enhancement, and even though you can't give us more detail, I guess my question applies to all of these. Should we expect to see this activity in other parts of town as well, since we've got, you know, a number here? Or is it directly related to new subscriber use or upgraded subscriber use?
I, I mean, in general, I'd say there's just this ever-growing thirst for bandwidth, and we're just trying to prepare for that all over town. So I'm not sure if this will be it. There may be some more, but we're just looking to improve the reliability and speed here in town.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm, next, I would just wonder if we have representation from town staff, the engineering department that could speak to the applications, perhaps all of them? I don't know. Or, or maybe we'll do them one at a time?
Justin.
Yeah, I see Justin's hands up on the Zoom, but I also see Alan stepping up here.
So I'll introduce, excuse me. You're familiar with the grant of locations, they're usually detailed reviews. Our engineering division does a review, as well as the municipal light plant when it comes to sort of the utility pole work. Just for clarification, future, this is very pro forma through the Public Works engineering. There's really nothing to see here with their concerns when it's underground. That's when they'll weigh in and give you some comments. And the light plant is also reviewing to look at potential conflicts with wires and offsets and that sort of thing. So I'm not aware of anyone from the light plant to answer those questions, but in the future, grant of locations, which are simply just upgrades to utility lines, will probably not have staff available, but when there's impact in the right-of-way and underground work, we'll always have someone here. But Justin's available to give you any clarification from the engineering division. If you're, Justin Richardson is the Assistant Town Engineer.
But I hope we don't go into any great detail on these.
Now, well, let's see. Justin?
Good afternoon, everybody. So basically with these, I forward them along to CMLP for their review. We do have standard conditions that we typically apply to these, and then CMLP would give us any additional conditions related to them. They, they always meet with Comcast, you know, prior or, or after, just to, you know, take a look at the poles and make sure the locations and all that works with their existing infrastructure and, you know, power lines, other, other communication lines, that type of thing. So, you know, essentially, we, we prepare the comment letter, which, I believe that these ones all have all the same conditions. I'd have to look again, but I believe there's, there's 10 conditions in each of the five grant of location hearings related to, to this. They're all, they're always required to get a right-of-way permit. They do any work inside the town's right-of-way, and that comes through the engineering division. And then they also have to follow, you know, electrical code and stuff like that related to any of the wiring that they're doing. So is there any specific questions you'd like to, to ask?
No, it just, I mean, it, it sounds like these are even more routine than usual if they are going over, overlashing poles that already have service from the utility and they're replacing infrastructure, right? It's.
Yes. So I'm not sure if all of them are being replaced, or they're just being like overlashed, you know, attached to the existing, the existing poles, like additional wires. But yes, essentially what you're saying is, is, is true.
So in the cases where you have prior cable there, will you be removing the old cable?
If it's, you know, when we're up there, if there's something redundant, we take it off. That's a common.
That's your policy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's a condition, actually.
Yes, it is.
It's one of the 10 conditions.
Obsolete materials we remove. And also, and I think this is something that came up in a discussion we had a week or two ago, the requirement that also that the, the infrastructure be removed when the service is completed.
At the end of its life.
At the end of its life.
Yep. Okay.
So, and I assume we can apply these comments to all of these.
All these applications. It sounds like they are all equivalent from, from the technical aspects.
It's going to be very similar, yes.
Okay. Any other comments from members of the board? Then I'll take comments from the public. I see Carlin Reed has her hand up, so feel free to unmute yourself and make your comment or question.
Thank you. Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End, also Chair of the PEG Access Advisory Committee. And I'm not sure if this question goes to Mr. Richardson or Mr. Franks. I've noticed that the network enhancements, it talks about the cable, but does this also fall under our new 5G wireless small cell installation policy? And the reason why I ask this is because some of our Comcast cable TV subscribers have been receiving advertisements from Comcast for 5G wireless service. That's it.
Okay. That is a good question. Does this involve any 5G wireless communications infrastructure?
This is not, no. Comcast does, you know, many years ago bought Spectrum from Verizon and sells it under the Xfinity brand.
Okay.
So we do sell a 5G product, but they're small cells that are put up by Verizon.
Okay. So none of these applications include any wireless transmission?
No, sir.
They're, they're all cable?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? If so, use your raised hand feature. I do see one member of the public in the audience here in, live in person, but no others. Okay. I am not seeing any, so let's.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Can we have a motion on this?
Move to approve the grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts III Inc. to install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number 52 Bedford Street to utility pole number 32 Old Bedford Road.
Okay. One down, five to go. All right. So let's open then.
We have to vote on.
Oh, second. Jeez. Okay. No, it's not down. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we're done with that one. Let's move to the next one.
Move to open the public hearing for a grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts III Inc. to install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number 2 Elm Street to utility pole number 42 Elm Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Are there any questions, given that we already had a presentation of this? Is there any material difference in this, other than the location being on Elm Street?
No.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Actually, is there any consideration of historic districts here in this location?
To Elm Street.
To Elm Street.
Justin, the historic district, is that part of the review with Public Works? Do you look at that?
We do.
Would be the next, number 67 Lexington Road also could potentially be a case of that.
We, we have not typically, because this is sort of, there, there's already utility poles there. They're not installing new utility poles. There's already wires, so.
Right. And this is in the public way? It's not a building?
Correct. Yes. So tip, we haven't in the past. If, if, if you believe it's necessary, we can.
No, I don't think it's actually strictly in the jurisdiction, but, so, any other questions or comments from the board?
Yes.
No? Okay. Any other questions or comments from the public on this application for number 2 Elm Street?
42 Elm Street.
Through 42?
Okay. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts III Inc. to install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number 2 Elm Street to utility pole number 42 Elm Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we have two down.
All right. Move to open the public hearing for a grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts III Inc. to install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number 27 Lexington Road to utility pole number 67 Lexington Road.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing is now open. Any questions from members of the board? Okay. Any, any differences that we need to? Okay. We, questions from the members of the public would be next, except for I just want to ask, first of all, from town staff, is there any material difference, other than the location being on Lexington Road, of this application from the others?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Could these all have been on the consent agenda?
Yes. Or bundled, at least?
As public hearings, no, because they, there is a public hearing. The public has an opportunity to speak.
But couldn't you open it, one public hearing for all of them?
They're individual grants of location. I don't believe so.
Let's plunge on.
Yes. But we did have a member of the public. So if you could move to the table and, at the microphone, so that we can get your name and address, as well as your comment.
I just want to know how this will affect service that you have now.
Ma'am, if you could identify your name and address.
296 Old Bedford Road in Concord.
Yes. And your name?
Arrington.
Arrin, first name? Okay. All right. So if we could ask Comcast to address that question about impacts on service?
My pleasure. I, I would imagine you wouldn't, wouldn't notice any difference, hopefully, but what we're hoping to do is avoid log jams in the system and avoid outages, create redundancies, so that we're more reliable.
Will there be any interruption of service during the installation process?
There, I, I don't anticipate that that may happen, and that's, that's a good question. And we do give 48 hours' notice at least to any affected customers if that is going to happen. We try to do this when they're offline, because we don't want customers offline. That could happen, yes.
Okay. And how long does that typically go? I mean, I realize it could vary, but.
It could last for a couple of hours, yeah.
Couple of hours. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Okay, seeing none?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts III Inc. to install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number 27 Lexington Road to utility pole number 67 Lexington Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay. Move to open the public hearing for a grant of location petition.
You know, thanks to a member of the public for her question.
Okay. Thank you.
By Comcast of Massachusetts III Inc. to install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number 159 Main Street to utility pole number 161 Main Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now open. Any questions from the board? Any questions or comments from town staff on this application? Again, I assume it's similar in nature to the others that we have reviewed. Any questions from the public, either online or in person? I don't see any, so.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Second from Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts III Inc. to install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number 159 Main Street to utility pole number 161 Main Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let's move to our.
Move to open the public hearing for a grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts III Inc. to install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole 105 Monument Street to utility pole number 122 Monument Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Are there any questions from the board? Any comments from staff? Any questions from the public? Yes, please.
Will we be notified when the expected coverage is not going to be there?
Okay. So I believe you had mentioned that before, but you could repeat your comment.
Absolutely. At least 48 hours.
We've had one area, when there was a dog gentleman on, that we lost power, that they did other things.
Okay.
You will receive written notice.
And at least 48 hours in advance?
Yes.
Right. And that outages typically?
Will we be notified?
Yes. And that typically an outage is two hours or so, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other comments from the public or questions? All right.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Move to approve the grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts Three, Inc. To install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number one oh five Monument Street to utility pole number one twenty-two Monument Street.
Second.
Second from Henry. All in favor? Aye. And now we have two minutes where we need to do something else.
Like, we, I think there was one more, isn't there?
There is, but it's not seven forty yet.
Oh.
So.
One comment is, these new screens are wonderful, but we still don't get speaker view when somebody is speaking. We still get the little vignette. Is that, is, can that be mastered?
I think it's just a setting. It's just a setting of the meeting.
Amadi, I think.
Makes a big difference.
You can. You can definitely do it. I've asked him before.
Okay. So why don't we do nominations?
Okay. Committee nominations. Laura Payne of four eighty Law's Brook Road to the West Concord Advisory Committee. Barbara Morris of nineteen seventy-five Main Street to the West Concord Advisory Committee. Ryan Hanley of seventy-seven Lexington Road to the Historic Commission Associate Member.
Okay, thanks. And now let's move to committee appointments.
Move to appoint Mark Galis of sixty-two Prescott Road to the Transportation Advisory Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, 2025. Lindsay Howard of Sixth Loring Road to the Library Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, 2025. Mary Beth Barker of fifty-one Birch Drive to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for a term to expire May thirty-first, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of these appointments? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right. It is now seven forty, so let's move to our final Comcast grant of location application.
Okay, I think that's this one, Old Bedford Road, right? Okay. Move to open the public hearing for a grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts Three, Inc. To install new coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number nineteen Old Bedford Road to utility pole number thirty-two Old Bedford Road.
Do I have a second for that one? Second. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Now, I do have a question on this one, which is, this appears to be directly adjacent to the first one that you, that we did. And that one seems like it could have been consolidated into one big application to me, but I don't know, why not? Is it because different street name? No, it's Bedford to Old Bedford, the other one. And then this one is Old Bedford to Old Bedford to the same pole.
Is it the same poles?
Well, thirty-two, it seems to be the junction.
I think it has to do with, that's a good question, and it does look like they were submitted around the same time.
I mean, it's a minor issue.
I agree with you. That's, I don't know.
But you may be wasting three minutes of our time.
Well, we're probably spending at least three minutes discussing it too. Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's all the same, I guess, but all right. Any other questions from the board? Any comments from staff?
I think the reason they have to submit it is because it's a different street.
Okay, but the first one has Bedford and Old Bedford.
Bedford and then Old Bedford, I believe.
This one says Old Bedford. I mean, they, the first one has two streets on it, so.
Well, maybe this is a separate project. They have to do it at two different times or something.
I guess. Okay. Questions from, comments from the public? Okay, then let's close the public hearing.
Move to close the hearing. Public hearing.
Second from Henry. All in favor? Aye. So now we need our final motion.
Move to approve the grant of location petition by Comcast of Massachusetts Three, Inc. To install coaxial cable to be overlashed to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number nineteen Old Bedford Road to utility pole number thirty-two Old Bedford Road.
Do I have a second on that one? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is one that I cannot preside over. That is the Christopher Heights Funding Requirements Status Update.
But it's really, we're not taking any action.
We are not deliberating.
And we're not taking any action.
What do you think?
Well, I think it's going to also be on what we need to do about the SHI going under, so I think you should stay. But it's, I don't know.
Is it possible that we will be taking action? Let's ask the town manager. Is there any action that the select board is going to need to take tonight?
I don't believe we are contemplating any select board action this evening.
Yeah, it's just, I don't know. I think it's just fine. If I step out, we make you the chair pro tem, so I move that Terry Ackerman be the chair pro tem for this next agenda topic. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, I will absent myself.
We're ready.
On this agenda, a moment.
Okay.
Listen.
Matt?
Good, there we are.
Can you ask Amadi to give us speaker view?
It is.
Oh, okay, great, great. Okay, wonderful.
He did it.
So I understand that we have several people going to make presentations. I think maybe Liz Rust and Lee Smith. I'm not sure exactly who's making presentation, but I did want to ask that you be concise. I know that there are quite a few questions from board members about this project.
And another reason to be concise is that we have a lot of correspondence in our, in our materials for this meeting that are available to everyone. So I think most of the issues are out there for, not only for us, but anybody who will go and look at the meeting materials.
Right, but at the same time, we have a lot of questions I've heard from pretty much everybody. So thank you for attending tonight, and who would like to start?
I think Lee, I think Lee Smith is going to start.
Sorry, I just got here. I don't know what was said proceeding, but I should wing it. Thank you for hearing us on short notice. I believe the board has memo dated July fifteenth that I submitted a week or so ago. One development since we submitted that memo is that the Department of Re-Housing and Development informed the developer that he will not be eligible for the round of funding for the summer. If I could just read briefly part of an email from Kate Racer from DHCD. Walter, we received your letter of intent, but we will not be able to process Christopher Heights of Concord as part of the ARPA High Readiness Round. As you know, the NOFA emphasized family production projects. All projects coming into this round will be family production projects, and all projects have full local contributions firmly in hand. So what that means, I'm skipping around a little bit, but my memo provided three options for the town that effectively eliminates option one, but does not eliminate the developer from applying for additional funding for a later round in the fall and winter term. So really, this is an introductory presentation, if you will, to ask the select board whether there is any appetite on the part of the town to consider what is effectively a municipal contribution as required now by DHCD for paying for part of a connection to the sewer. Whether that's technically feasible or practical, we do not yet know. There may be someone in the audience who might be able to speak to that, but I'm not quite sure. So with that introduction, I'm happy to take questions or direction from the board.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Let's start with questions for Lee, and then I know that people also are going to have questions for Alan Cathcart about the connection, but let's just start with the questions for Lee Smith right now. Board members, Mary?
I'll start. Thank you, Lee, for being here with us. I'm wondering if, it seems to me from your memo, it's that the DHCD was looking at the contribution of the town, and I thought, do we have any data that shows what Concord's contribution has been to this project relative to other towns' contributions to similar projects? Because it seems.
I do not, I do not have that data. I know from prior town meetings, there's at least $2 million on the table plus economic benefits resulting from a TIF agreement that town meeting approved. Liz might have more information on that.
I think that what you're talking about, Lee, is what Concord has contributed to this project. I think maybe Mary's asking about what other town contributions are, and so.
Similar projects.
Is what Concord has contributed to this project? I think maybe we can. No, we do not have that, Mary.
I think that was one of the, one of the lines of questionings that was followed a couple of years ago, and the then-chair of the FinCom was asking the developers if they could provide us with financial information about similar projects that they had done.
Yes.
And my recollection at that time is that they were unwilling to provide us with that information. I don't know whether they subsequently did, but I know at that time they were, at least were reluctant to give us that information.
I guess where I'm going with this is that if the DHCD is saying they want other, they want the community to pony up more money, I wonder if we actually took a look at some data and said, relative to other towns, we're already putting up more money relative to other towns for similar projects or as a proportion of the project. Is there an argument to be made there?
But these, these, these developers have done similar projects in other towns. That's why the questions are relevant.
I know, but I meant other developers, because the DHCD is looking at other developers. So if there's, if it's not available, then it's not available.
Right, and this is.
We might be able to ask DHCD for that. I don't know whether they will provide it.
I don't know, yeah, because it seems to me if they're pushing back, saying we need Concord to, you know, contribute more, it might be a valid question, well, you know, how much are other towns contributing? I don't even know if you want to go there.
One thing that we can do tonight, I think we're going to have a long list of questions that are going to need to be researched. We're not going to have all the questions answered tonight, so that's the first one.
Do you want me to keep going?
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead, Mary.
The other question I have is that when you came to the town in 2017 for the $1 million in free cash, the price at that time in the MOU was seventeen point three million. And now, five years later, we're at a $28 million cost. That's a hundred and sixty-two percent increase. And I'm wondering, how did that happen? Because we've had five years of, recently we've had high inflation, but for five, for many of those years, we've had very low inflation. So how do you explain a hundred and sixty-two percent increase in the cost of this project?
Okay, who would like to take that one?
I can't speak to the math on that in particular, but what I can speak to, as I think most people around the country are aware, is what has happened since that time is the COVID-19 pandemic, significant supply chain shortages, drastic changes, increases in construction costs, and now currently increases in financing costs, among other things. So it's, we are all kind of a victim of our own national situation, and that's the best I can answer for that.
Final question.
Okay, final question.
Okay. The sewer hookup fee of, my question is that.
Can you hold that one? We're going to be talking a lot about the sewer hookup with Alan.
We are. Are you going to be talking to this?
Well, we have a lot of questions about that.
Well, can I ask it now? Or?
No.
No?
Just hold on.
Guess not.
Because I know Linda has other questions, and then we'll go on to Alan next, and we'll ask a lot of questions for Alan.
Lee, you mentioned, or Liz, you mentioned not eligible for this NOFA. When would be the timeline for the next NOFA?
I can take that, Lee, if that's helpful.
Sure.
In that same email from Kate Racer, she says, you know, she goes on to say, please feel free to update me after your next meeting with the town to determine whether Concord intends to provide more funds to your senior assisted living project. Pre-applications for our January 2023 winter run, winter rental funding round will be due in October, and we expect to post a notice of funding availability for that round in early September. So that would be by November, the, any firm commitments would need to be in hand.
Well, that's very important, and I'm glad we went on to that before we talked with Alan, because we have a lot of timeframes about the sewer that it sounds like are going to have to be firmed up then by October or November in order for us to apply.
October. Due in October.
Okay. So are you saying?
The bad news, I'm sorry to interrupt, the bad news is that he's not eligible for the summer round, but the good news is it buys the town some more time to figure out what it wants to do.
Okay. And what will you need in terms of the sewer, if the town were to go ahead? What do you need by October or November? Do you need approval from the select board, approval from the Public Works Commission, approval from DEP? What are all the approvals that you need by October?
I think that, I'm sorry, I'll just jump in. I think that there's two parts. There's the approval for the, you know, connecting to the sewer, and that's, I'm not sure Alan from probably in Marsha could maybe answer that, whether it's an actual permit or the simple approval is enough, I'm not really sure. And then there is the firm commitment for the, what is now estimated at $800,000 for that construction and sewer improvement fee.
Okay.
Just to follow on that, I think DHCD would need a firm commitment from the town for those financial obligations.
Yes.
In time for the next funding round.
Right. So a question that I have is, one of the drivers of this project that I heard loud and clear at the Municipal Housing Affordable Trust meeting on Wednesday was the need to stay at 10% at our SHI. And in order to do that, we need eight to 20 more units. But we are working on the housing production plan, and when is, when is that due to be completed?
I think it's December is our current target.
So if you have a complete up-to-date housing production plan before May of 2023, doesn't that show enough good faith effort to keep you in the safe harbor?
No. You can have a housing production plan, an approved housing production plan, but in order to achieve the safe harbor, you have to create units under that plan. And Concord would need to create more than 20 units under that plan to achieve a one-year safe harbor for the plan. So it's not, it's not really an effective tool for safe harbor purposes for Concord.
So when you meet, when you say create units, do they have to have building permits by?
They have to be on the SHI. They have to be created on the SHI. So they have to be either created permitted using 40B or building permits if they're created using local zoning.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for Liz and Lee before we move on to Alan? Henry?
What is the size of these units?
They're small. I think they're perhaps exclusively the one bedrooms, maybe there's a few two or three bedrooms, I can't quite recall.
No threes. No threes. Ones and twos. Sometimes there's a couple of two bedrooms to accommodate aides, but very small. They're probably, they're probably seven to 800 square feet tops.
So the, the developer has, in some of this correspondence, referred to a per-unit cost of $338,000 per unit.
Correct.
And so what does that come out to on an average of the construction cost of these units? It obviously is, it would probably be about $500 or $600 per square foot.
I don't know that we can look into what that square footage is. I can maybe pull that up.
I think, I think if we're being asked to provide subsidies and accommodations, I think we need to know more about the economics that are driving the cost.
Okay, so that's.
I would, I would just, I would just say to that, that I think maybe the relevant data is the number of SHI units you are creating for the town per unit, and I mean, you can certainly do that metric, but, you know, it could be 2,000 square feet or it could be 200 square feet, but this is really an SHI-driven project.
You're making it clear that the goal here is not to create housing, but to just stay in, stay in compliance with Chapter 40B, which are really, in many ways, very different things.
Well, it's certainly creating housing for a very targeted assisted living elderly population, which doesn't need 2,000 square feet. I mean, this, this is a proven model across the state. I believe the developers got, don't quote me on this, but five or six different, very similar, if not identical, projects that successfully house people seeking this type of housing.
But what you're really saying is that we're willing to pay almost. But, but what you're really saying is that we're willing to pay almost anything to buy our way out of 40.
Bullshit.
If you're at home and not speaking, please mute your microphone. Thank you. And we're going to have time for public comment in a few minutes.
Terry, can I have a quick question before you move on?
Yeah. Mary.
Have you looked at private fundraising?
I, we have not, no.
Okay. And how many units? Is he still creating 83 units or has it changed?
Eighty-three units. Eighty-three units.
Okay. I've been asked by two different people whether the number of units has decreased, and I don't know where that idea came from, but, okay, we're still at 83 units. Okay. At this point, I'd like to have Alan join us. I know we have a lot of questions about this potential sewer connection. One of my questions, Alan, is, does it require a DEP permit?
It's not my understanding. First, I'm responding to inquiries that have come in as of Friday. So my preparation for this is 27 years of Concord, not that much, you know, time on this project.
No problem. We're all, we're, I'm totally confused.
Fair enough. So my understanding is, at this point, in my experience, there used to be a permit through DEP anytime you had a sewer collection system extension. I believe that has been updated, so that's no longer a requirement based on the quality and the extension requirements. I think it would be town-only permits.
Ah.
Or approvals at this point. That's my understanding, but if the proponents have an engineer who can give more clarification, I'm all ears.
Does anyone have any more information on that?
I just wanted to just report back that it's a $520 per square foot number for Henry. It's about 54,000 square foot, which includes the common areas and the, you know, the dining room and other that besides just the living areas.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for that answer, Alan, because I've been wondering how we are going to have all this permitting done by October when we have to go to DEP. So you've just answered that you think a DEP permit is probably not required.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
How much, how much of that?
But, but hold on a minute. Do we need a different type of a permit for addition to the wastewater discharge?
So for this project, it does not fall within the comprehensive wastewater master plan, meaning it's a parcel of land. Back when we developed this plan, we did a parcel-by-parcel assessment of needs in town, and we went to town meeting with a clear delineation of those parcels that would be eligible for connecting, as well as neighborhoods that would be eligible for extensions. And the reason we did that is there was so much confusion and angst and challenges as far as meeting environmental protection interests, limitations on the capacity. It was a very clear plan, very publicly vetted, and that plan was approved at town meeting and then submitted to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for certification. So the reason this was not contemplated for sewer connection previously, and clearly was because it wasn't eligible. In order to, so what that would mean is if the applicant made a request for sewer, it would be administratively denied by the water sewer superintendent for the fact that it doesn't have frontage. There is no sewer system to connect to. Any appeal to that would go to, as a result of the town meeting vote, would go to the Public Works Commission, who's responsible for implementation of the CWMP. The Public Works Commission would evaluate the, the benefits and risks associated with that request. They'd be the entity to make a determination if they could allow for it. By doing so, this would be precedent-setting. There has been no other extension of the sewer system to accommodate a parcel of land that was not already identified for future connection.
So let's assume that that all happens, and the Public Works Commission takes a vote, and even if they approve it, how long will it take to build the connection? I just, I'm having trouble figuring out how this is going to be done by October.
Couple of things. So at this point, I have no idea what engineering discussions have happened as far as how it would work. I'd caution the proponent to be aware that there hasn't been an assessment of the collection system that would be receiving this flow of, a peak flow of over 12,000 gallons a day based on Title V. It goes onto Commonwealth Avenue, which has very small collection system. I believe there's six-inch and eight-inch pipe. A six-inch is what a conventional, single-family house would have today.
Oh, wow.
So it already serves part of Commonwealth Ave., and it would be combined into, it's probably an eight-inch, and I think we'd have to evaluate, could the system accept that kind of flow? And if not, one of the provisions that would likely be made is the applicant would need to upgrade the infrastructure to accommodate that. So I don't know if that's been part of the cost benefit by the proponent yet. I haven't been involved with any conversations, any questions about that.
Okay. Thank you.
When you say upgrade the infrastructure, do you mean the wastewater treatment plant itself, or do you mean the pipes going to it?
This is the pipe itself.
The pipe itself.
Yeah. There may be a restriction of flow that I'm aware of. There's been history of some, some backups along Commonwealth, Commonwealth Ave. already. So we'd want to look at the hydraulics and make sure the system, the collection system could receive it. That's step one. The issue for the Comprehensive Wastewater Master Plan is capacity-driven, which is, is going to take from capacity that's already been allocated for other use or intended use.
Terry, can I, do you want me to, can I continue?
Okay. Mary, you have another question, and Henry had some questions.
So this is a question I, I'm asking your opinion, but you mentioned capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, and this would, this would bring 12,000 gallons per day into that. And I know that you've got an application to increase the capacity at the wastewater. Would the fact that this is an affordable housing development in any way impact the granting of that application that increases the $200,000, 200,000 gallons a day that you've got in process?
I would like to think it would add to the argument in case Concord has made previously. We think we've made a compelling argument to EPA and DEP. The challenge is, could we get buy-in, whether from the housing community and/or the environmental protection community, not just, you know, Concord Public Works, the Town of Concord, but maybe watershed groups and that sort of thing? You could see a compelling case that there's balance here. It's very difficult to get an increase in a surface water discharge. In fact, I think it's only been done once in the state in recent past. But, you know, Concord can make a compelling case. This, this could add to it, but there's certainly no guarantee.
Okay. That's, it's the guarantee I was, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Henry?
The, the, the number that was mentioned, the $800,000 number, how much of that $800,000 would be the sewer improvement fee for 12,000 gallons per day?
Just back the envelope, the sewer improvement fee is about $40 per gallon. So it would be 12,000 times 40 would be just ballpark what the sewer improvement fee would be. So, you know, I don't know what that is. 400, 440? Yeah.
500,000.
Yeah, 500,000, and I don't know what the rest of it is. You know, it might be for the extending the sewer to the campus.
But a substantial part of that number would be to satisfy the sewer improvement fee, which actually then would be money that came back to the town.
It would go, and let's be clear, because I just, you know, the town, this is an enterprise. So the wastewater system is enterprise, and it only serves a third of the town. So one of the challenges with managing this is not to put a burden for whether it's economic growth and development, or affordable housing, or anything, on a third of the town. That's always the risk here. And I don't think that, that's the intent of the sewer improvement fee is based on allowing the town to allow for some infill and some expansion of pre-established, I don't know. Not this particular site. So when you look at who has to, you know, sort of bear the burden of any risk, it's the sewer ratepayer and the, the, a third of the community.
But what I'm saying is that if we provided funds for the, to pay the sewer improvement fee that would be due on account of this project, it would be actually money that was, come back to the, our public works.
Correct.
So we'd be just moving money from one pocket to another for a good part of that 800,000.
If the town were to front the money for the sewer improvement fee, that'd be correct.
So just to follow up, there, the 800,000 that's being estimated, about 500,000 is for the sewer improvement fee, and what is the other 300,000?
I am not proposing a cost of 800,000. I don't know.
Okay.
The other 300,000 was the cost to, or for the construction to bring this, the, to the, to actually connect to the sewer.
So is that the same thing that you were talking about, Alan? The pipe is a, is a sep, is a third thing then?
Correct. That would allow for new infrastructure to go on Winthrop Street further up and then connect the building. That's apparently the, a cost of 300,000. I don't know that, but it sounds like that's the new infrastructure. To tie into the old infrastructure, which goes back, you know, over 100 years, it wasn't designed to accommodate that kind of flow. It was a small residential Commonwealth Ave. So we'd have to look at that and see if that pipe would need to be increased in size, hence new installation, and so that would have to be factored into the cost benefit.
And is that pipe under Commonwealth Avenue by any chance?
That's correct. Yes.
Which you're digging up now.
Excuse me, not that part of Comm Ave. Okay. Yeah, good question. So Comm Ave from the Rotary down to sort of the.
Drove.
Yeah. Canyon Park, right there. That's, and, and that, it then cuts over across behind the Nishoba Bakery area, so, but it would be that run that would likely have to be evaluated.
If that had to be done, it wouldn't mean digging up Commonwealth Avenue again.
Not again. It would be digging up more of Comm Ave in a different area.
Yeah.
Okay. Linda?
So this is really helpful for you to lay out various components of this. If in fact, a compelling case was made, if in fact it did get approved, can you estimate in any way what kind of timeline it would take to do this work? And certainly, it's not going to happen in the middle of winter, I'm assuming.
You're talking about the actual infrastructure work?
Mm-hmm.
Well, so the first approval is, is a, you know, meeting or two or something. So let me be clear on the, the timeline. To accept this creates a new precedent that the town now has to understand a major tenet of the CWMP will have been violated. At this point, we talk about affordable housing, but I'm talking about any kind of development that wants to extend sewer. We literally lost the backstop of our CWMP. If it's challenged, we'd have a hard time going to EEA and saying we've upheld our side of this permit. So that's the risk. That's another, that's why we protect our precedents very clearly. And, and to be clear, with affordable housing, there has been, the commission has seen the, the need and benefit to bend and allow for modest, you know, changes, but nothing that is allowed for an extension of the sewer system. It was all infill. So they're, they're obviously sensitive and willing to work with the community when scale is appropriate and in the right interest. The decision to say we're going to take the CWMP and throw it or expose it is going to be a difficult decision for any board or committee, because they're there at the request of the town meeting to protect that interest. So I think that's, that's a challenge, and I'm not going to speak for them. I don't think I'd be able to recommend anything other than you're, you know, you're going way out on a limb, and the town's going to be at risk, and the town has to accept that, which is, you know, their decision. The construction, I think, is the least of the costs or concern. It's going to require a construction season, you know? That would be, you know, something that was done between April and November, and all this work could be done if it was designed and planned properly.
So I think, don't they estimate that the, if, if there was a sewer connection, they would save about a million and a half dollars on constructing a onsite facility?
1.3 million. Yep.
So from what you're telling us is that if those are the alternatives for us to do the sewer, go the sewer route, may just not be cost-effective, because there's maybe a much cheaper way to do it without connecting to the sewer, although it's just a question of who spends the money.
Correct. And the cheaper may be onsite with 1.3 million. We don't know that yet. And even then, the town asks aside, do we want to contribute and support this?
And if I may interrupt just a minute, I'm sorry. This is Marcia Rasmussen, Director of Planting and Land Management. Terry Ackerman earlier raised the question about DEP approval, and if it were an onsite wastewater treatment system, that does require DEP approval, which I'm not sure what the timeframe is for that, but we were, as we were moving, having discussion about the NOFA for the summer, we knew that that permit would not be issued in time for the summer NOFA. It may be issued in time for the next round of applications, and I can't answer that definitively tonight.
Yeah, and I can concur. If it's an onsite system, there is a DEP permitting process. That would be for a groundwater discharge and then a, a review of the treatment process. So two different permits, you know, through DEP. But the, the question I was answering was, to connect a town sewer, there is no DEP review process.
Right. This is incredibly helpful having you here, Alan, and thank you for that comment, Marcia. Are there some other staff people on Zoom that, or Liz or Lee, that want to add some more comments? It's hard for us to see that view right now.
So this is Liz. I would only mention that with the, the onsite system as an option, because of the DEP permit, the timeline does take longer, and the, the request or the funding from the town would be to build that system. So I think that from a, from a, from a funding gap perspective.
Right. So it sounds like in the housing production plan, even though some of those other options might take more than a year, they still might get done before this project. I mean, we don't know, but.
If I, if I could just, if I could just add, I, I, it's my understanding that certainly the connection does not have to be built in time for the DHCD process to proceed, but they're looking for a formal commitment for the funding for, whether it's a sewer connection or an onsite septic system. And then that'll, that'll, I presume, will be built simultaneously with the construction of, of the project itself.
Right.
It doesn't have to be built in advance.
Thank you, Lee. Other questions from the Select Board for Mary?
Terry, what do you see as the next step?
I have no idea. I think we should ask Liz, Marcia, Carrie, Lee. Yeah.
I, I, I personally, I, I think, and anyone can correct me, but I think we, we need to dive deeper into the technical aspects of the project and sharpen our pencil and get some, some better numbers and determine what the feasibility is and how much the town thinks it'll cost. But I'm, I'm speaking for myself.
Yeah, I just recommend you have an engineer sort of get involved to give you those cost estimates, because, you know, we can, we can guesstimate, but I think you want to know what the numbers will be.
I, I know the developer has an engineer on, on board.
Yep.
And if I may add, I, I think what we heard at the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust meeting last week is that, that there is a bit of a, a, a strong desire to make sure that we do not.
that we do not fall below our subsidized housing inventory numbers. And look, the, the trust was looking at a variety of different projects that might be, be fundable and able to assist in that goal. And that the only project that is currently there that, that might meet those needs is Christopher Heights. And so I think it's really important to say, yes, it's important to consider, to continue to consider this, sharpen our pencils, get those numbers, and, and look at all of the issues involving the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Program Plan and as well as what are our alternatives and options for Christopher Heights and bring them back.
And the timing for that?
Right. And when I was at that meeting last week, it seemed as though the team was recommending that Christopher Heights was a lot more likely to come to fruition in time than the other projects. But at this point, um, some of the other projects maybe might come to fruition around the same time. It seems like this project is going to take longer than we thought.
There are no other projects, Madam Chair?
Uh, well, I, we did have a list from, that had obstacles on it. I think it's from Frank, maybe? Other projects that, that are possibilities that haven't started yet?
I think it was the Concord Housing Authority presented a few projects that all totaled would net maybe four units. And as you know, with the Commonwealth Avenue project, the Concord Housing Authority projects are very expensive right now. And so that their costs, you know, increased, you know, I think in two years, just about the same as this project to the point where they were not able to go forward. So I think that it could take longer to piece those two together, both the, the design and feasibility as well as the funding. And it wouldn't achieve the same number of units and certainty around the 10% and would definitely take longer.
Right. There's a, there's a list that, that we have, six on Walden Street and six, eight on Bedford Street and et cetera. But a lot of, there's a lot of obstacles with these projects. I understand that. But Christopher Heights, I guess, has obstacles now too that we have to think about. Mary?
But again, the, the process, right? The process is, is that any money that the Municipal Housing Trust appropriates has to be approved by the Select Board.
No, I...
Doesn't it?
I, I don't think, I don't think that's correct.
Uh, that's what it says on the website. I thought it was, it had to be approved by the Select Board. So the, you know, that's something I think we need to look into because that's my understanding, that the, when the Affordable Housing Trust was set up, it was that the spending would be reviewed and approved by the Select Board. So...
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Yes. Who is that? Lee?
It's Keith Bergman, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. The, the by, the trust's by law does not require a Select Board approval of expenditures. Select Board approval is needed for any acquisition of land or disposition of land. Select Board approval is needed to, to approve the guidelines that the trust adopts to ensure that we're consistent with townwide goals. That said, I do want, I would want to report that the vote that the trust took last, last week, it was a unanimous vote in expressing support for Grantham Group's request for state funding, that we specifically wanted to express to the Select Board that the trust views this project as the highest and best use of any town funds for affordable housing, and we added the use of which would be subject to the Select Board's policy direction. Now, that and, and period. So that in this case, we felt that because of a, a number of factors, including some representations that, that no additional public town funds could be used on the Christopher Heights project due to some prior agreement or perhaps even vote of town meeting, we felt that if that were the case, that there were some other policy approval or some other action that were required to allow trust funds to be able to be used, we simply wanted to bring to the Select Board that, that we would want to be able to help if we can, subject to your policy direction. And it's actually for, for those Select Board to determine, for example, whether, you know, if, if you were of a mind to support, say, the use of ARPA funds or in addition to use of the trust funds, there's $1,080,000 in the Affordable Housing Trust now. That's it. So if the Select Board, so we felt that the Select Board's policy direction was very important because of the perception that, that the town has spoken that no additional town funds should be used for the project. So, so we're just reporting that back to you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Keith. And that 1,080,000 balance, I believe there's, as a bit bluff is come, is coming out of that. So the, the balance will be less. Is that right, Carrie, or not?
That's the balance after the...
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, after the aspib bluff. Okay.
Right. Because, because we just got another 500,000 added on July 1st.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. That's right. Other questions? Linda?
So, um, Mary asked a question about needing to have some comparative data for other projects and what percentage has been contributed by the municipalities. I've heard Lee suggesting that we need, at this point, need to go back and sharpen our pencils in terms of the finance. I do think that in addition to Keith's remarks about what the trust said the other day, I also heard that where we ended up, besides the support for this project going forward to the extent possible, that the Select Board consider what source of town funds would be appropriate for this project, which might include the, the trust or may, and as Keith referenced, may include other ARPA funds. I, I guess, this has come up before, I guess maybe at the trust conversation the other day where other housing units were present, housing entities were present for the discussion. We, to this point, have not seen the updated so-called one-stop pro forma that is used for filing the expenses and revenue for this project, now that the increase has been escalated to 28 million. I would think that that would be important for all the housing people close to this topic and the, and the Select Board and the town. And what, what we do know from information that was shared at that meeting is, and I think it was in our packets today for information, was that the developer has part of the solution that he's proposing, besides asking for a certain level of funds from various categories from DHCD, including delaying his development, developer's fund fee. And if you look, so if you look at that amount of that developer fee and what's being asked for, for the increase in this, to, in order to accomplish the sewer project, we need to be asking some questions in terms of how those two relate. So I, I do think getting more financial information is going to be critical to being able to move forward. And the sooner that that's available, the sooner I think we can try to identify a pathway forward. I guess that's where I am right now.
Okay.
And I, and I do want to emphasize that, you know, Keith summarizing the, the position of the trust the other day in terms of this being high priority project in terms of meeting not only a defined need in town for assisted living for elderly housing, for a project that has shown its efficacy in other communities as well, is a real need in town. And while some people are spending time talking about the 40B and the 10%, that clearly is a piece of this whole discussion in terms of our SHI and needing to be in safe harbor. But I think we started with the premise that all of the effort that's gone into this for the last almost 10 years at this point, for those of us who've been around that long, has been because there was a defined need that we recognized for the town and for its citizens. So as, I appreciate Alan being forthright and giving us the context of what any action in his bailiwick would mean in terms of precedent and town risk and future work with DEP. And I, and I respect that. And I'm glad you emphasized that a couple times. But I do think we can't lose sight of a need that we have in town as well. So I'm willing to spend more time dealing with the numbers and trying to find a pathway forward, but we've got to have some information that's forthcoming in a more detailed way. Not that it hasn't been forthcoming, but in a more detailed way.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Linda. Any other questions from the Select Board? Mary?
I really would, going forward, like to get a better understanding of the relationship between the Municipal Housing, Municipal Affordable Housing Trust and the Select Board. Because again, when I read on, what's on the website, it seems to me that there are approvals so required by the Select Board. And I know that we want to work together and you want direction from us, but I would like to get clear on exactly how those funds are appropriated.
So I would just say, I think that's appropriate, and it may have to do with the narrative that's on the website.
It could be because this clearly states that it requires Select Board approval.
Okay. And so at this point, we'll take public comment in a minute. I'm just going to sum up so far the research that we've identified needs to be done. One thing is that Lee has graciously volunteered to ask DHCD how much other towns have contributed. That was the first question that came up. Another question was, um, some research needs to be done at the Sewer Department about these pipes and whether they can handle the flow or how much that would cost to upgrade them. Lee and some others are talking about diving deeper, getting better numbers. And Alan suggested that the engineer at Grantham do some estimates. Linda requested an up-to-date one-stop, and Mary wants clarification on whether the Select Board has to vote.
And also how we get to the $28 million number. Is that in your list?
Um, okay.
From the 17...
Why did it go up to 28 million?
From 17.3.
All right. Any other questions that need research? That's seven questions. Okay. Are there some questions or comments from the public? Okay. Who is that? Dori Kehoe and then Pamela Dritt.
Good evening. Dori Kehoe, 51 MacArthur Road. And I, I am a supporter of affordable housing and have worked in Concord for that for the past number of years. But I am distressed because at town meeting, when the money from the Community Preservation Act was, was forwarded to the Grantham Corporation, a for-profit corporation, which is sponsoring this, this housing development place, the, the agreement made by the corporation was, this is the last time we will come back to the town for any financial assistance. Here we are. And this is done in a, in a, not a direct way, but an indirect way. I, I understand that all of these things are needed and I support it, and we need the affordable housing, and there are low-income people in town who definitely need it. But I would like to, to also remind you that as the costs for the living of the, for the people who manage places like, like Grantham's properties, the cost of living for people who live in town, who have lived in town for many, many years and are now really struggling to pay their taxes, to stretch, to even ask them in any way to stretch, to pay for something that this for-profit corporation is asking, seems to me entirely inappropriate. This is now, this is not the first time that this has happened in the past month or so, and I suspect we're going to get many, many more requests for this. But I would really like to ask you all to think about, are we going down a slippery slope? And what does, what does a corporation's word mean when they were distinctly told, we were distinctly told at town meeting, we will not come back to Concord for any more funding assistance? Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it. And I hope you all take a long, long, hard look at this project and others and other changes which will be requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Dori. Pamela Dritt?
Uh, thank you. I too think that we should easily get more information as Mr. Smith did volunteer that there were many other such, um, housing units that the contractor had built. So they should easily be able to give us the amount that the corporation contributed versus the amount the local, local communities contributed. And in a comparison with this. And I would like to ask, are the units going to be all-electric with heat pump, air conditioning? Because no new construction should be built without air conditioning in the current climate, particularly elderly.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions?
Well, I want to know the answer.
I'm sorry. Um, does anyone have the answer to that? Okay, it looks like...
Sorry.
Go ahead, Lee.
I can try to answer. My recollection, this goes back a few years, is that the units are constructed to receive, I don't know if window units is the right term, but individual units.
No, no.
Can I finish the talking, please?
I'm sorry.
And that, and that their experience has been just as a function of the population that they frequently aren't requested or installed. But I, we can clarify that with the developers.
Can I please request you to update your construction methods to the modern building, which is both cheaper and better?
Okay, Pamela, we hear you. Lee Smith is not the developer. We can request that from the developer, but...
And should a for-profit corporation that's wanting to put window units in new construction?
Okay, thank you. So, um, I would just like to comment that it was said at the beginning of this presentation that you're looking for some kind of direction from the Select Board. I know we're not going to vote tonight. And I think we're probably split. But I'm just going to say, in my opinion, if I had to vote now, I would vote against it because I have voted for this project three or four times. And I do support affordable housing, but I do really think we need to honor the MOU that says no more direct or indirect funds be given to this project. And I'm also very disturbed here that the project would require breaking this important precedent with this sewer capacity when we're already trying to, we don't have enough capacity as it is. So for, I have a lot of other reasons, but those are my two primary reasons. I'm very disturbed by this request. Tanya, and then I think we're going to move on after that. Oh, Tanya and then Stefan, and then we'll move on.
Tanya Gales, 62 Prescott Road. Terry, I, I share everything, your opinions on this. Terry, I share everything, your opinions on this. And it is, in addition to the repeated ask for funds, the fact that now our environment might be further damaged and our waterways might be damaged, that those are things that cost a lot more than anyone can estimate. And I think, I really hope that people who know much better than I about how to create affordable housing, how to make that happen, would just pull out of this project and find, find some other project that is more worthy of our care, our support, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the last comment from Stefan Bader.
Thank you, Terry. Stefan Bader, 7 River Street, Concord. I'm speaking just for myself tonight. I think we need to take heed of the fact that we may find ourselves with an unexpected, unplanned, unwanted Alexan project drop somewhere else in town on us if we don't move forward with this. And just for the record, I looked at their website yesterday, The Prescott, The Muse, their idea of affordable housing is a one-bedroom, 700-square-foot unit for $1,750 a month. And that's the affordable unit as opposed to the unaffordable that count as affordable that are, you know, $2,000 to $3,000 plus a month. I think, I don't like having someone threaten me either, but I think we need to be aware of the landscape that we may find ourselves in come March. And at that point, it'll be too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready at this point to have Matt come back and continue with our meeting. Thank you so much to all the hard work that everybody has put in on this very difficult project.
And continue with our meeting. Thank you so much to all the hard work that every.
Okay.
Well. All right. What's next?
Did you have a good nap?
My vacation is now over. So I think we'll move to our next agenda item, which is number 17, the vote for a letter of support for a federal land access program or FLAP grant.
Move to approve the submission.
Well, actually, do we want to have any presentation or discussion of, well, first of all, yeah, any?
Well, I did see Erin Stevens was on the call. Erin, do you, are you interested in giving us a quick update of this item?
Sure, yeah, I can give you a quick update. I apologize, I am, have some spotty Wi-Fi, so I'll be staying off of camera. So essentially, we are still looking to submit for the FLAP grants. We are seeking 2.5 million from that grant. It is due on August 1st. We are ready and prepared for it. I can mention that we, we were, or we are still hopeful that there may be another source of funding from the transportation bond bill, which got passed through the Senate and the House, but is in conference. And I spoke with the Mass Municipal Association and the MAPC, and they both, both supported continuing to go forward with the FLAP grants, just to make sure that we can get the funding for this project, for the shuttle project. I think that's sort of the basic update.
What is the FLAP grant for?
So this is for the shuttle project between.
Trolley?
Well, this would be an extended trolley that goes from Lexington through Lincoln to Concord.
Okay.
You know, supporting the whole Battle Road idea.
Okay.
Now, it could have additional stops in Concord, I assume.
Is this the workforce one that?
The focus of this is an intermunicipal thing to support the tourist surge coming.
So Erin, the 2.5 million, is that divided among the three towns, and how much is for Concord?
So the, the way that the project will work is that we'll be functioning as one sort of entity, if you will, to support a, four shuttles that will be going between the different towns and the national park, working all together to create a more regionalized approach to getting people around for the next three years through 2025.
Was this, are we collecting information from the trolley in support of the application for this FLAP grant?
Yes.
Because I've been in town a lot recently, and I don't think we're getting good ridership on the trolley, so just wanted to throw that out there.
So the, the trolley, it's only been running for a couple of weeks, and we have, the ridership has been picking up steadily. But as with all things, it takes some time to do marketing to get the, the numbers up. This is a project that, you know, we've done feasibility study, there's been the, you know, the, the interest seen from the long-range plan and several other spaces in town that have showed interest in this project. So I think that there's a need for it in that what we've, what we've seen, and especially coming towards REV 250, we want to be, we want to be sure that we're ready.
No, I know, Erin, we've had, we've already had the, the conversation about the trolley, and we voted to support it. I'm just saying that based on my experience being in town, I think, I think better advertising, and by advertising, I mean signage on the actual trolley, might help. So some more aggressive, when it rides by, you can't even tell that it's a trolley, really. We don't have to go into this, it's just I would really like to see people use it because, for many reasons, for the grant, because we've, we're spending $100,000 on it. And I just think that getting more, better signage on it might be a good idea, because I would really like to see people use it. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, so there is a letter in the packet that is in support of this grant application, and that is what we are voting on now, is this letter. So do I have a motion?
Move to approve the submission of a letter of support for a federal land access program FLAP grant, as written in the packet.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
You made the motion, I don't think you can second it. You firsted it.
I'll second it.
Okay, Linda?
You're awake.
Okay. Any further discussion, pro or con, on this application?
So it's related, it's related to the, the letter of support looked fine, and I have no issue with that, but it's related to why we're doing the letter of support, and that is, are matching funds going to be required for this particular grant?
There are no matching funds. The, the grant is actually, for the first time, fully funding whatever is provided in the funding. No matches required.
Thank you.
Actually, I have one question for Henry. Is the 2025 committee aware of this? Is the?
Aware of what?
That we might get this, that we're applying for this grant, and we have a regional transportation?
I mean, I'm not sure even we're aware of it. I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, it's something, it's a possibility.
Okay.
But, but it might be something that we would, we do not have specifically have a transportation subcommittee, but we're.
But you have a marketing or?
We do, we have a marketing and communication branch. But I mean, if something becomes available, I think we'd be happy to pursue it.
Great.
And we've been in touch with Lexington, and our point of contact there was, came down with COVID, which slowed things down. But yes, we're trying to make it a cooperative venture with all the towns involved.
Right, okay.
Okay, I guess I'll take a vote. All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Good luck with the application.
Yes. Well, or even better luck to not even have to win this grant and just get the transportation bill to fund it, either way.
That'd be great, too. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, so let's move to liaison reports. Who'd like to go first?
I can go first.
It used to be easy, because it used to be Susan Bates would always go first. That made it quick. It was easy. Okay, Linda, tell us.
So as you could already tell, there was another housing meeting of the trust, and the trust continues to invite the other housing groups to discuss their goals and priorities, just because of all that's going on with the housing production plan, walking up to the community preservation application due date in September, et cetera. So I think that's the best update there. Also attended the ZBA meeting, and they were, had a number of applications that they reviewed, but one in particular I'll point out, which is that another two-family home was approved on Conant Street where other, the other cluster of two-family homes has gone up.
Okay. Any, okay, who would like to go next?
I'll go.
All right, Mary?
The Recreation Commission had their meeting at White Pond at 9:30 in the morning on one of these warm days, and it was just beautiful there. It was beautiful. The work they've done there is beautiful. So it was, what the Rec Commission is doing is they're having more of their meetings at the recreation facility so that the commission can get a feel for what, what we have available. So that, that was a great idea. They're working forward, they're moving forward on their RFP for their strategic plan. I think they'll have that ready in a few weeks. They're going to have a shutdown of the BD Center in the last week of August, and they're having a tour of the BD Center on August 25th at 1:00 PM. So if you want to come in and look at the rooms behind and all of the pumps and all of the, I've already taken the tour, it's, it's really fascinating. So August 25th at 1:00 PM, open to, to everyone for a tour. And if you want a private tour, I'm sure Anna would, would accommodate you, but this is going to be more of a group tour. The BD Center, the books closed for FY '22, and they have a $350,000 surplus. Remember, the budget for them was a $540,000 loss.
Yeah.
So they're coming in, so it's about an 890.
That's a big swing.
It's a big swing. It's a huge swing. And that's after depreciation. So she's, they're doing a phenomenal job.
Wow.
And membership is higher than they ever expected. So they're, so it's, it's, it's looking good. They're doing, she and Adam are doing just a great job there. So that's something that's working really well. I went to the CMLP meeting. The thing that's of interest is that, you remember Article 38, that was a citizen petition article by Dean Banfield?
Yeah.
To develop a plan for solar generation on town-owned lands. They're still debating whether it should be a committee, or a subcommittee, or a task force, or hire an external consultant. So I'm a little, and they are obviously thinking that they're going to go over the end-of-the-year deadline. So that's something that needs to get jelled.
Yeah.
A little bit. Other than that, I went to MMA training yesterday, Saturday, for new Select Board members.
Mixed martial arts?
Mixed martial arts, yeah. Yeah, that's what, I need that.
I think select board members should all get that.
I do, I do. No, I think anger management would be good, too. That's it.
Okay.
I just want to comment that I took a walk at White Pond, and it was beautiful. I was really pleased.
Isn't it beautiful? They did a great jo, they really did.
Yeah.
They really did a great job. They did.
Okay, Terry, will you go next?
I might as well go next. So I went to a meeting right before the Select Board meeting, a joint meeting between the Personnel Board and the Personnel Study Task Force, and it turned out to be an excellent meeting.
Wow.
Yeah.
Good.
Everybody seemed to be on the same page. So let's see how things proceed after that. Next, they're having an employee public forum. Actually, everyone's invited, but especially the employees. That'll be a hybrid meeting at 1:00 PM in the afternoon.
I'll make it into a clam bake while you're at it.
Will you bring the food?
Well, 1:00 PM, I mean.
Okay. And also, as you heard.
Terry, what day is that?
Yeah, what day is that? Give me a second, and I will find it. August 29th.
Okay.
At CMLP hearing room, 1:00 PM.
Thank you.
That would be great.
I think the clam bake would be a great idea.
Yeah, but I think it's going to be great if some Select Board people go, because the next thing after that, they will be coming to the Select Board to present their findings.
Yes.
And they're going to be asking us to do a lot of follow-up. So we need to all get up to speed on this.
Okay.
And also, they've hired this consultant that they're all excited about, Kelly Hebert, under Kerry, and Amy Foley, and the Chair of the Personnel Board, Bill Marachek, are working with the consultant to update the Classification and Compensation Plan, which hasn't been done in 14 years. So it's a really big project. And then I attended the Transportation Committee. There will be a transportation table in Concord Center at the Sidewalk Sale Event in early August. And they're going to be talking to people about, what do they know about transportation? What do they want to see? All kinds of things like that. For example, one of the things is complete streets. What do people know about it? What is it? What's the process? What do they want?
That's great.
So there's a lot of data to collect. So that's enough for me at this point.
Okay. Henry?
We are, we have a very active and a very distinguished group of members. We now have a full complement of 10 executive committee members and have formed subcommittees under each one of them, and we have like a total of probably close to 40 people involved in the project now. The subcommittees are starting to hold their individual subcommittee meetings. Subcommittees, some of them have as many as six or eight people on them, and some that require fewer, such as the Finance Committee is a smaller group, but it has on it a former member of the Select Board, a CPA, and a former member of the FinCom. And they're dealing with Kerry about the financing issues. We, and in order, we're kind of having to build this as we go along, because there actually is very little precedent for a regular committee to have actual subcommittees that function within the, within the structure of the open meeting law. So we have to arrange people to, and I developed a standardized form of meeting agenda, standardized form of, for template for minutes, and have asked the Town Clerk's Office to work with us on putting together a, a kind of easy-to-understand structure for presenting these things on the Minutes and Agenda's website. And so, I know, we just kind of, I think that this all has been done before, like 50 years ago, but it was all done before the open meeting law. And people just have to get used, used to that, and they have to be educated on this. But it's, it's really working, and it's getting people involved, and we have a really a very, I'm very impressed with the group of people who have stepped forward on this. One of the things that we're trying to do now is instead of duplicating functions of other committees, is to try and, try and use other committees as resources for us. I am meeting on, I have a meeting later this week with a member of the Town's DEI Committee. I have, and I'm trying to get the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee revived or beefed up. And part of the struggle there has been something that the town acknowledges that we have a, our system of knowing even who is on a committee, and when, how long their term is, and when their term is up, is something that is sometimes, especially if the committee hasn't been diligent about it, is almost impossible to figure out. I think I have got it figured out with the help of the Town, Town Clerk's Office. And it turns out, there are. Office. And it turns out there are, there is on that committee, one person whose term expired, has already expired and two people who think they're on the committee, but were never appointed, um, which actually turns out to be more of an opportunity because I think it gives us an opportunity to, um, uh, you know, to appoint somewhat more active and more connected people to that committee. Anyway, um, I'm optimistic and we're working hard in getting this done. It takes a lot of my time because of all the people and all of the administrative work that I have to do. It's very similar to, so very similar to this committee.
Okay.
But anyway.
Yeah. I mean, originally you signed up for 11, uh, committees as liaison, but now with the, uh, sort of, uh, subcommittee expansion, your duties have expanded as well.
That's right. I get 10, 10 liaisons. But also it turns out that many of my liaison committees are either doing such a great job, I don't have to say much about them, like the Civil War Monument, which actually has given us a very good window into some of the things that we can do for the 250th, including the conversation we've had about creating a monument to those people who served in the Revolutionary War. Because in fact, if you go around the town square, you find monuments with names for every single war starting with the Civil War. And the only thing that recognizes by name the people who were involved in the Revolutionary War is a plaque that was put up in the post office for the, uh, I think for the, um, I think 50 years ago by Ed McCaffrey, uh, which I have then, um, I'm starting to try and reconstruct that with the, uh, help of the historians at the, um, Concord Museum. And I think we can use that as an, uh, as a very good opportunity to, uh, to deal, uh, to recognize some of the DEI interests in terms of, um, African Americans and Native Americans who in fact were in, and women who were involved in the Revolutionary War who can be identified and recognized by name. So, um, you know, we're, we're happy to have any kind of connections or ideas that we can get. And we will, we will probably sometime in September or October, hold some kind of a public hearing for input from members of the public.
Or a public meeting, public forum.
Public forum to solicit ideas and comments about where we're going.
Uh, that would be, I think, a, a good milestone.
I think we also need to have, by the way, talk about clam bake. I think we need to do a little bit of what we call team building now that our group is getting that large.
Okay. And actually, are we do, I think, aren't there quarterly updates that we should, we should be getting from the 250th? I think we should be getting quarterly reports. I believe that's our-
Be something more formal than-
Yes. So the select board, I think we should,
Oh, we have, actually, since we, we haven't, I think, quite done a quarter yet.
Okay. Well, we're getting there though.
Our first meeting was, yeah, because we've met almost every week, by the way. And I want to encourage people, uh, that, that it is possible to have a committee that has meetings that last one hour.
Well, actually on that note, um, I'll transition the discussion to my liaison report and start with the DEI Commission, which does generally conclude its meetings within an hour. And also to note that at the most recent meeting, uh, they appointed new co-chairs, uh, Rose Kratsley and Josh Lee, who actually became co-chair on his very first meeting. This is quite impressive. Um, and, uh, that, uh, the other linkage to the 250th is that, uh, Rob Monroe will be, uh, working with the 250th. Uh, he's, uh, you know, associated with the Robbins House and that, uh, the, the DI Commission, you know, he's taking that on as a project. He, he was recently the co-chair, um, and to, uh, you know, work on the DEI, uh, aspects of the 250th celebration. So that's what's happening in the DEI Commission. Then there was a school committee meeting, not a regularly scheduled school committee meeting, but one that was called, uh, kind of in the wake of the increased, uh, budget estimate for the middle school and discussions among the, uh, Concord, uh, Public School Committee about, you know, what to do, um, you know, what the situation was, what they might want to do relative, reaffirming the educational plan and those kinds of things. Uh, and that's where some of the discussions about potential special town meeting were brought up. Uh, and then I went to a finance committee meeting, a regularly scheduled finance committee meeting, which, um, or no, that was also not a regularly scheduled meeting where there was further discussion of the middle school and the further brainstorming about possible approaches, uh, to deal with, uh, the, the parent budget overrun, uh, with the co-chairs of the middle school building committee present as, as well as others. Um, and then, uh, I reported earlier about the feasible schedule and the other kinds of arrangements that might have to be made if it came to having a, a special town meeting on that issue. Uh, then, uh, finally, uh, the middle school building committee also met and, um, so, and, you know, reviewed, or, or will be meeting, excuse me, this coming Thursday to review, uh, a list of, uh, value management items. Uh, there's just as a spoiler alert, there's already $2 million worth of, um, items that have been identified as recommended by the professionals. So these are lots of little, uh, design details about, you know, treatments for outdoor spaces and, uh, the kinds of insulation used and all kinds of other details, uh, that don't actually have, uh, impact on the, the total square footage of the building, but rather it's, it's cost per square foot. Uh, and then there are other items on there, including some fairly drastic ones like, um, don't build the athletic fields. Don't tear down the old building. Uh, you know, things like that. Okay. That, um, uh, probably don't fit within the project scope that was, uh, you know, that the town expects, uh, this project to achieve, uh, as well as things about, uh, changing the size of the auditorium and door of the gymnasium. Um, so, you know, much more to discuss there about either trying to achieve, you know, the budget that we have versus trying to increase the budget. So, yes.
I had a couple of follow-ups really quickly from Henry's report. First of all, when Henry's talking about the subcommittees, it reminded me that last September, I believe it was, we had, um, Town Clerk Kari Tari and some other people do a training for all boards and committees. And we used to do it every year in the fall. And, um, can, Carrie, can we, um, set up something like that again this fall? Cause we have a lot of new people on our committees.
Yeah. I'm, I'm assuming we do have that planned already.
Great. And my other question is about the quarterly reports from the 250th. Are you looking for written reports or is this going to be an agenda item or what, what do you have in mind?
Well, I, I would actually say that I'm fine with the initial report being a, uh, written report and that we could, either their election or ours, ask them to come in at some future juncture. Right? So for example, we get quarterly reports from the middle school building committee, but then, you know, in our, uh, meeting in August, we will have, uh, the co-chairs come in in person and speak with us. So I, I just, um, would suggest-
When is the meeting in August? When are they coming in in August? Which?
Lou, they're coming in the August 29th meeting. Yeah.
I'll be here.
So, yeah. Yeah.
So you transitioned so well into your report. I didn't get to ask a couple, make a comment either. So, um, I do, I do remember, um, Kari mentioning that the recording from last year's committee training, um, was available and that new members should be encouraged to do that. So, you know, we're so heavily scheduled, um, that may, may be a substitute just a matter of reminding people to, to, to look at that. Um, the second thing is, um, Henry, it does sound like you're doing a lot of good work and getting people on board for the subcommittees and so forth. Are, are you, and you mentioned templates and that you're creating. Are you, are the subcommittees also posting their meetings on? Okay, good. And the reason I just wanted to revisit that is because it's a great way to let people know that this is happening with earnest at this point and sort of, you know, more people find out about. It's amazing how many people don't know about it.
I know. But, and we, we need to do- ... site under our committee, which is under, um, 250 Committee, which is right, the first committee that's listed. And we have quite extensive materials on the town website under our committee, including listing names of people, which one of the problems, for instance, I had, I wanted to communicate with another committee about some of our business and their business. Do you think it was easy to find contact information or to even know who the members of the committee were? You know, I would think that at least for the, for the use of the select board, there ought to be a comprehensive staff and committee, um, directory so that when you want to get in touch with somebody who is on the Public Works Commission, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to rummage around for half an hour to find out how to get in touch with them.
We all agree with that. And I think-
And I think they're working on it.
I think Carrie and the Town Manager's Office have a plan and they're working on
Yeah. Well, good. I mean, I'm just saying that it turns out to be a real handicap when you can't even find out who the members of the Finance Committee are.
Any, any other questions?
So just, since you were talking about scheduling the 250, uh, 250 quarterly report, we should remember to bring in Mike Lawson at the same time from the state perspective.
Yeah.
Matt, I have a question about the $2 million on the, uh, value engineering. Was that on construction costs? Was that against the 5.3? Against the 5.3?
That would be, yeah. And, and, uh, so.
Okay. Just wondering.
That's good news. Going in the right direction.
Again, it's, you know, the, remember that the 30% construction estimate is still a preliminary estimate and not the one that the, you know, the building committee is going to operate on off of for its final set of decisions on, on this.
Tell me, $2 million is margin of error, less than, less than margin of error.
Well, we'll take it.
But it shows that they're working on it.
There's definitely serious work being done on trying to cut scope, uh, in, in cost. So, uh, the, now moving to correspondence, so you miscellaneous correspondence, you will see in your packet, a note from Wilson Kerr that was addressed to the select board this week. Um, so, uh, moving from that, uh, now to public comment. Uh, let's start with, uh, members of the public in the room.
There are people-
Okay. And then we will, we will have people on the screens.
Thank you.
People in the room, take precedence. Yes.
Yeah. Tanya Gillis, 62 Prescott Road. I, um, first of all, I want to say thank you for this productive meeting. Um, and that it is nicer to see everyone who is on call there. When, when you have the, um, full screen, we don't, uh, see who is there. Then I wanted to say that I did attend the, um, Arts Subcommittee Meeting of the 250th. Thank you for all the volunteers, all the work. And as some of you know, I am a pianist and, um, musician and, and I, I hope to propose a program also that may be relevant. Um, I had a question about the special town meeting. So, so all that item is about is that there may be a special town meeting in December. Is that, is that what it is?
Well, it's, it's too early to actually plan it. It was just feasibility analysis of, okay, people have talked about it. What would that mean if someone did, if, if we did hold one? When, when would the timeframes work out?
Okay. Thank you. And, um, what I would have said about Article 47 when you were discussing it was that, um, uh, when the article was prepared, I, I, I think, I think the intent is that it would inform anyone who gets involved with the trail at any point in time. And, and thank you very much for the care you're showing for this article and the sensitivity of your letter. And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Um, turning to the Zoom participants, I see Carlin Reed, I believe.
Hi, thanks. Carlin Reed, 83 with send. I want to give a shout out for the trolley. I'm one of those people who actually rode it the full route, all the way down to the West Concord train station, up to the Old Door Bridge Visitor Center. And it was a lot of fun. I would encourage everybody, uh, especially members of the select board to try it out because it's worthwhile. And best of all, this summer, it's air conditioned and free. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Other members of the public, if you would like to make a public comment, uh, use the raise hand feature and unmute your microphone and identify yourself. I am not seeing anyone at this point.
We put them all to sleep.
I guess we must have. Um, so.
Move to adjourn.
Uh, I think we can adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for your participation this evening.
Thank you.
Adjourned at 9:16.